We have just finished our attorney-qualified privilege, so I need to adopt the agendas recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Powers, to adopt the agendas recommended by the superintendent. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries four zero. And then we're going to go ahead and move on to citizens' comments. Do we have any green cards? We'll go ahead and move on then to approve the instructional and support recommendations. And if you just give us a moment to look through it. And whenever somebody's ready, we can just entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve personnel information on Goldenrod.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the instructional and support recommendations. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. And we're moving on to item A2 on business and support, approved funding of alternative educational principal. And I'm not sure who's representing on that. You or Mr. Fisher?
I can answer some questions and Mr. Mull and me can respond as well.
We're requesting that in the next one of the agendas you're going to talk about today and perhaps approve is the contract with the micro school. One of the lessons learned when we did the transition between Renaissance and with CERMI is that there is a lag between our processes and their processes. We were fortunate that we had Ernie Hopper was able to fill that void as the assistant principal at Renaissance at the time. We don't have that in this situation. So we're asking for a position where we can identify a person that has some secondary experience that could possibly work with the transition so that when districts, our processes and policies are transitioned well with this public charter school.
At the middle school, when we had a consistent transition policy between the Renaissance school and the middle school, it worked so well. When for a while we stopped doing that, it worked as well. That transition is so necessary to have both of them succeed.
We've talked about that too, having that transition piece back and forth. And is this something that would be able to work within some of those pieces?
I've talked to the micro school and this would, you know, we're looking for possibly this being able to be something that we can transition into next year as well. So I think it's, it would be in the best interest of the students and the school district as a whole to have this connection with that. It's not, it is a public charter school, but this, again, are going to be our students, our guidance counselors are seeing this as another tool in their toolbox for trying to help these at-risk students that we're not able to reach with the programs that we currently have at the high school. And we have a lot, but this will be one more opportunity so that we don't lose these kids to drop out early in school.
I agree. I'm ready to start now.
We are too.
So you want a motion to? I move to provide the funding for an alternative education principal.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the funding for an alternative educational principal. Any more discussion, comments? The other thing too I was going to say is, you know, we've been having a challenge that's growing. We've talked about it because of the increase in high school graduation requirements. I can't believe, but it still seems that this year they're talking about at the legislative session, having an increase to it, which is a little scary. So I really feel like this is sadly an unfortunate growing need that we're having. And I appreciate the superintendent, the assistant superintendents bringing this forward. I'm encouraged at what we're going to be able to accomplish. With that, I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney legal matters?
Oh, that's sorry. That's under my section.
Yeah.
I thought I was done.
You couldn't have squeezed an extra page into it? Because it was what, the contract was only sixty-something?
Fifty.
Fifty? Okay. Good work then.
We were trying to get this to the board at the January regular meeting, but there were still some issues to be hammered out. And so we found it resolved in this last week and I asked them to place on the agenda to copy the district. I remember I worked on it yesterday. There's the charter school agreement between the school and the micro school, Citrus micro school. We've created technologies and technologies to meet, you know, outside of that.
If I can entertain a motion and then we can ask some questions if we have any.
I move to approve the charter school agreement between the school board of Citrus County, Florida and the Citrus Micro.
Second.
School of Integrated Academics and Technology Incorporated.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Powers, to approve the charter school agreement between the school board of Citrus County, Florida and the Citrus Micro School of Integrated Academics, Academics, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble too, and Technologies Incorporated. Discussions, comments?
Yes, I had some questions. I tried to read through the contract yesterday. On page twenty-four on accreditation three point eight, it does not say who the accrediting body is, so I was just curious who that accrediting body will be.
Mr. Simon, thank you for being here.
Page twenty-four, three point eight. And again, without even referencing that, Troy Baldry, who's been the agent in our contact, just to clarify, there are two parts to this statutory requirement for a charter school. There's first, an application, and then a contract. So you're looking at the contract. In the application, it also references who the agent is for accreditation. For all of our schools, the accrediting agent is SACS accreditation, Southern Association of College and Schools. They have their own accreditation as part, and that was part of the initial question we asked in the application. So they have their own agent who also, Karen has assisted with that, who also follows the SACS accreditation, but they don't do it as part of our district, they do it separately.
So can we just put SACS?
SACS accreditation.
We put SACS in the contract then?
Well, it's really now has a new name, and I don't recall that offhand. SACS accreditation has a new name, but it fulfills the same national standard accreditation agency. So, and it has a different, and again, I think it's referenced, and I'll pull it up for you in a minute, Mr. Dodd.
It must maintain their applicable certification accreditation of its educational program in order to make sure transferability of courses can be applied to students at the school. So if they don't have that, they would.
Right. I just understand there's a lot of different accrediting bodies out there now. They're not all one of the eight regional accrediting bodies, so that's what I was concerned. I mean, if you're looking at different programs, there's some degrees that you can get and some cool work you can take that have all kinds of accrediting bodies behind them, but they're not one of the recognized accrediting bodies. That's why I was asking, why don't we just put it in there?
And again, Mr. Bradshaw, that was one of the questions we asked in the application process, and I clearly recall, I'm trying to pull up in the application, that it is the same agent that does the SACS accreditation, but I want to make sure I give you that right name.
Okay.
The contract also, the agreement also incorporates our application.
I don't think, I think.
So just for clarification for Mr. Dodd too, then, so that he, so that that's satisfied, and I think it's a great question. If the application stated it and they answered it, then it would include it in this part of the contract?
Okay. Okay, I'm happy with that. I just would like to see.
I think that's a great question.
All right. Yeah, we're good. On four one two on the administrative fees, it says it's maximum allowable by Florida law. And then later in seven seven six, it says eighteen percent. Is that what the maximum administrative fee is, eighteen percent?
Yes. That's the management fee, so that's included in the contract.
That's the management fee, correct.
So Mr. Dodd, I will tell you that that is the same question that our attorney Bradshaw asked and clarified several times, so good eye on that.
Okay, so it is eighteen percent? Okay. My other question is on the nonprofit organization on seven point one, which is on page forty-three. It's a nonprofit organization, but then in seven seven, it says that they made contract for management with a separate corporation. Seven point seven on page forty-six, it's later to a contract for management services with a separate corporation. I just wanted to get a little explanation of that, why, what's the reasoning for having two corporations? Is it liability issue? Why?
What it is is that they are a nonprofit charter, and so in order to do that, they have to set themselves up as what is it, five oh one, C three, or three C, whatever corporation. And then they can, they can contract down the management of the charter school to a noncorporation.
So micro school is a nonprofit organization, correct?
Yes.
And then do we know who the corporation is that's going to be running the school?
Citrus Micro School of Integrated Academics and Technologies is a five oh one, C three corporation. And then, but then they have like a parent company, because they have like Pinellas Micro School. So each county that they go to, they set up their own independent five oh one, C three corporation to run that particular, to run that particular school. And then they have their parent company, which is.
And the parent company manages the school?
Probably. That would be their school, I guess. They will have onsite management.
Okay.
If you look at seven point two, it talks about it will be governed by a governing board.
Right. And seven point seven, I guess what is more my, was my concern. I just wanted some clarification on the fact that they made it to a contract for management services with a separate corporation?
And Mr. Simon, I think you might be able to share. I think that's not that uncommon with charters, where a charter will contract with a, basically another charter management company to run.
Sometimes, just like CERMI, they, they separate out some of the supplemental services to another company. And we do sometimes the same too. We contract with a separate agent to specify services. I don't know how this hierarchical structure is.
I think if they have a parent company, they're probably going to do all the back office, administrative, accounting, finance, budgeting, billing, that type of stuff. The local corporation's going to actually be the manager of the school, running the school. They're probably going to subcontract out the management behind the scenes to the parent company, I think is the way.
More than that. Was it a personnel or?
Right. Exactly.
Okay.
Because the parent company also has language where they can extend loans to them, to start-up loans, to start the business up locally. And I think they're going to locally incorporate Citrus Micro School that have a local advisory board within that local corporation.
I see.
So let me answer your first question. I will send to all the board members, part of the application, they had to send the accreditation. So I have, it's advanced ed. It's not called SACS accreditation. It's, the company's not called Advanced Ed, that awards the Southern Association of Schools. So they have a certificate that verifies that they are accredited. And they have one for their office in Gainesville, one for their office in Pinellas, one for their office in Jacksonville, and they will move forward with that accreditation process for their site in Citrus. But I'll send you the copy of the Gainesville one, so you can see what that looks like.
And then usually, what is that, maybe two or three years out before they go through a?
It's usually, and again, this is Miss Noble's area, and I remember as a principal, I believe, it's a five-year accreditation.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Simon, just for clarification on charter schools, are they limited as to what accreditations that they can get as a charter school by getting state monies? Or could they go to anyone they could get accredited? And I ask that, because I'm not sure. I really thought if you were a charter, you still had to have a SACS.
If you are funded by the state of Florida, as they are, you are required to have accreditation. My understanding is the only one that I am aware, and there could be others, that the state of Florida recognizes is the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools. Now, there are different agents that process that. Advanced Ed is the one right now that does most schools in Florida.
So if somebody tomorrow wanted to come in and start some academy, and they found some charter somewhere else in the country, which I agree with Mr. Dodd, that you could find a charter. I didn't get accredited, that is. In theory, state would have issue with that.
Correct. If you recall, a previous charter applicant had an accreditation by an agent that was not Southern Association of Colleges and Schools, not Advanced Ed, and therefore, that was one of the criteria upon which we chose to deny that charter applicant.
Okay.
And micro school will be receiving FTE?
Correct. They will receive state funds, yes.
Do they, that school, I'm sure they would not, but would this school, this charter school decide to change their focus? And let's say this one is this one that the students who maybe are at risk, but what if they decide, now we'd rather work with all A students? Can they do that?
No. According to my understanding, and Mr. Bradshaw can confirm, when they submit their application, they must identify their purpose. When they submit their contract, they clarify that purpose and processes and agreements related to that purpose. So my understanding is they cannot change their mission without dissolving and reinstating charter.
Or coming back in front of the school board and going through the process again and having to prove that it's a purpose. They cannot arbitrarily just change it. Even if the board decided, would that be a violation of the agreement entered in their application and terminate their charter?
And Ms. Powers, that has happened in the state of Florida. Typically, the district intervenes, but also the state may intervene as well.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, to call the vote. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. And is there anything else, Mr. Bradshaw, you have?
No, sir.
Okay. Ms. Hamilton, did you have anything at this time? Mr. Blocker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mull?
Yes, sir.
Board members, did you have anything at this time? We will have another opportunity in our workshop. With that then, I'm going to adjourn the special school board meeting, and I'm going to reopen the workshop. And if there's no objection, I was going to have us move to the FTE forecast, and I will have you come forward. I'm sorry.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
I was asked to share a little bit about our FTE forecast process for next year's forecast.
We're going to come back to her, Ms. Hamilton, and said maybe if we could let Steve go first, and that way we can get him, because we thought it would probably be quick, and we might be a little longer. If that's okay, Ms. Hamilton.
Fine.
Okay.
Thanks, Simon. I know it was Steve. It'll be quick.
It'll be quick. Some of this information comes from the Department of Education, staff that assists us with this process. So this is one of their slides. Basically, there are three main things that affect our forecast: demographic and economic trends, virtual education, and our FTE enrollment trends. This slide shows the population growth rate for a four-year period from April 2010 to April 14. As you can see, Citrus County was showing a negative growth during that period still. I'm sorry.
I just want to see that slide for one more second if I could.
Sure. I'm sorry.
So Sumter was the fastest-growing county.
Yes, the villages.
Right.
Which, can you, can you also send us a copy of this, an email into us, and then we'll have it as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
This shows our birth rates for Citrus County, at least the births that affect those years of kindergarten and pre-kindergarten, and you'll see over the last few years, our birth rates have also been declining. This is another slide from the state about employment, comparing the employment in March 2014 to what it was during the peak period, during the boom, and Citrus County is showing a negative there also in employment.
Do you think the sort of your, like, the birth into that, if you can't, people, like, if you're out of the county, if you still live here, are people who work out of Canada and still live here, does it take that much?
We'll see something later that kind of compares our kindergarten enrollment to our birth rate in the county, because we used to have a lot of positive influx in the county, and lately it's been reverse. This shows the building permanent activity relative to the peak again, in Citrus County, at least through 2014 or 2013, you know, we show a decline since the peak there. As far as virtual education, you all know that the state continues to expand virtual education. Of course, that has a negative impact on the FTE that we earn, because we share our FTE with the virtual courses that our students take. And I will be sending these to you. This shows students enrolled in district virtual instruction. A lot of districts have their own program. We actually use the Seminole County program. You can see over the last couple of years, that enrollment has increased.
Is that for our full-time students as opposed to individual classes?
Yes.
Full-time virtual?
And the tax credit scholarships, another area that has continued to grow, takes students away from these sort of districts. This slide shows our historical FTE for Citrus County over the last five years. As we all know, it's been declining. This shows the kindergarten entrance versus minus the prior year grade twelve. So we're in a negative relationship. Our grade twelve is generally larger than the incoming kindergarten class, and our 10 11 is a large difference. Lately, it's been fairly steady, and this past year it improved a little bit.
Could you go back one slide this second?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
So as you can see, fourteen fifteen occurring here, we improved a little bit as far as our relationship between the previous year twelfth grade and the kindergarten. And this just shows our current enrollment as of last week. You'll see currently, our twelfth grade is larger than our current kindergarten class, and again, it's larger than what we're expecting to come into kindergarten since that birth rate has declined.
Do we, now that we have the classroom size amendment that we're having to do on a class basis, do we ever look at what that is and how that packages? Because for us, unfortunately, one student can mean to us 22 students from some, you know, pieces. How does that play into it? Because, as you know, I mean, we could have, at each school, one student come in, but it actually has tremendous effect on us, as if it were hundreds of students coming in.
If you try to staff this, teaching, you know, to, 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 to.
Inclusion, inclusion.
To mitigate some of that to a certain extent, because you certainly can double up in kindergarten and have those statistics.
I cannot.
Although I do say that. I truly, I understand, there's only a certain number that you have, just like teaching and classroom classes, and you see that's all manageable. So you can move those mitigating strategies as best we can, so we don't, aren't getting that great.
Middle school, I think, becomes a challenge for us in that, because we don't have quite a, high school, we're using first semester.
It's easier to integrate across those areas.
Right.
Typically, in high schools, it's.
How did we compare with January 2014? Do you know that? I mean, I understand we're still less by maybe.
I can, I can show you the comparison of October to October. That's certainly one of the special changes.
I see.
That's coming up.
That's good. Okay. All right. But we don't, okay.
I don't actually have a backwards change.
Okay.
This compares the birth rate in the county to our actual kindergarten enrollment. Years ago, the enrollment used to be much higher than the birth rate. We have a strong influx of families in the Citrus County. As you can see, it leveled off to be virtually equal to level twelve, and since, our enrollment has actually lowered in the birth rate. We did improve this year and got closer, so I hope that's a trend that continues next year.
Is it different, should students, private students, or they're going to another county?
I think it's a combination of factors. You have a lot of students that homeschool, private students, and then also, as yourself, who've had a loss of jobs in the past. It's all those factors. This shows the different models that this forecast software uses. They use nine different models. Includes up to five years of our FTE history, to maybe just straight weighted, maybe two to two years or, you know, recently, it was heavier than the years for the route. The models that seem to fly west, as you'll see in the next slide, really are model four, model eight, which is like two years of FTE history. Since we fluctuated quite a few of the last seven years. This is the simulation graph that the software produces. Of course, we want to be down in the lower left quadrant, have the lowest deviation for that model. So for this graph, four looks like the best choice. Eight is also a very good choice on that relationship. These are the actual projections, and these, these models were done for the current year, compared to the third count for the current year, and what the differences in each of those. You see all of the models have significant difference between what they would have projected for this year and what we're currently at with this year. And then it shows that each of the models would forecast for next year. Again, we will focus in on models from year eight. Sure. Model nine is really the only model that produced a higher projection for next year than those two models, and that's just the, yeah, one year of experience. Just a lot of model, typically, lots of shows. Again, this just shows a graph what it would look like if we chose model four, and these are the actual numbers. These are the actual numbers that model four produces by program, comparing them to the current year's third calculation of T. So model four just looks at two years of history, people who've waited each year, and it produces a negative unwed forecast of approximately negative one hundred, weighted of approximately negative one thirty of FTEs next year.
Any interventions to capture these students that we're not getting, ones that, you know, are here, are born, are ready for pre-K? Do we have a model, do we have a program that tries to capture them or? The pre-K program? Well, those who aren't in it, those who are of the age, but are not entering the school system. They'd be home schooled.
Okay, we have the VPK program, and we are looking at expanding it next year, because right now we only have one class per school, and we're looking at expanding that for the schools that have room for, or who can attract more students, because I do believe that every one of those people have got kids on the way to this. So they end up going somewhere else for the pre-K. So we're really trying to try and explain that to bring more of them.
And will we get FTE for them?
Yes.
All right.
Or they just find a pre-FTE and they're already running a collection.
The VPK is funded through a separate category, which is not free, because they have a separate funding process.
And how about those, say, that are being home schooled? We have a, from the mic, touch them and give them information about the school system? system or?
We thought we could go to the homeschool program.
I'll do it.
Hi, I know you've just been born, this is my name, Ms. Powers.
Except for the school board.
Ms. Powers, we're an open door. Just say that. We always, in a lot of the programs that we have in educational services, we extend that to the home education, so that way they're aware of that. I know that there's a good relationship that Mrs. Ruth Alagretta's partner has, and really talking about those options that students have.
And so we actively pursue it. Good. And I'll add by visit to possibly.
This is the same chart we saw for using Model 4, but for Model 8. And then the same data by program for Model 8. A little bit less of a loss of FTE for next year utilized in Model 8, 72 unweighted, 84 weighted. And this just shows the total district enrollment history, comparing October to October of each year. We were up a little bit this year. As of right now, our projections are looking like we may be down just a little bit again, kind of backward. We're in 13, 14. However, it looks like, at least at this point in time, that our high schools might still be growing a little bit, but we're looking at a potential loss that they'll enter most of the year.
Steve, that's been.
Yes, yeah. And we're actually rolling students forward earlier this year, we started last week, so these are real student numbers. These are actually numbers that are in our system.
Do we have any idea why the high schools are growing?
I don't really know. Guess, I don't know, some of those home educations, students are in the high school, private, private middle school. Obviously, they're credit.
Because usually in the past, when we do our calculations after December, usually our high school numbers go down, middle school's flat, elementary's up. This year, it was horrible.
Right.
Our high schools were above, elementary's below.
It's hard to.
I hate, I'm there.
We don't have a lot of.
We have residents, we don't have. And I, you know, I think a lot of, just, I've been visiting other camps recently, and some of the students that are not in the public school system suddenly see, like we're talking about, about graduation, it's a wake-up call, and they often think they'll leave the public school system, knowing that this is a better choice for colleges and stuff, for what they want, you know, they want to get in, they want the scholarships, they want to be sure that all their test scores are good, so they do tend to go with us.
So our forecast committee felt that eight was the best model based on our situation in the county, and that's what we use to submit to, you know, we are forecast. At the time, it was negative 84, it's going to be 86, 74 now, because the third calculation's coming for the current year, so we have a little better numbers there. We made a slight adjustment because we don't, we'll hold that just a little bit, program to the future. So that is our forecast for next year, and it's showing a loss of about 75 unweighted and 96 weighted. Mr. Walker, you just mentioned to me that probably we need to ask an adjustment to our forecast for the micro school that you're considering for the fall of that, so.
Is that something we do? At what point do we do that?
Soon as possible.
And the reason for that is, because these are the numbers now that the budgets would be built on through the legislative process when we get our initial calculation, second calculation, these are the numbers that we'll be using to, as it be for budget purposes and staffing. If we're, so that the micro school is approved, it's going to go, so now we need to make sure we include those numbers, because we will not get an adjustment on that number until the third calculation, that will be December, so we will essentially be fronting those dollars out, you know, without the benefit of having the FTE coming in. So I talked to Mr. Chandler about looking at maybe getting Mr. Simon to see what numbers they're forecasting to associate with the budget basis.
And I want to say, I thought the number that they were talking about was. Okay, that was what I was thinking, that the, and in those cases, even though there's, we're building our budget off that, most of that is done through attrition and other ways if there was needing to be a reduction.
As far as the number for them?
Well, meaning if we have less students and we have a less class here or there.
Right.
I mean, we typically always are hiring, even in those years where we've had massive reductions, we've still had hiring.
We still hire, we have to probably say by the way, it's a trend, even we're going this way, we still are hiring, it's like there's so much attrition, presentations, etc.
Would you call this, in essence, even though it has a small reduction to it, largely a flat? Or would you call this, you know, is still trending or?
I would say flat, I mean, it's essentially, it's actually a negative condition. And we hope, you know, we hope when we get to the third calculation, it's the sixth year, we have a low, we did this year, because it was nice to get back to two hundred students into the FTE now. We're just hoping, I reported to you last time, when I showed you the third calculation, you're saying that we hope the high schools tell those numbers, because it's in reverse to what we've always seen, where high schools need, all of them go up, and it's actually first trend, right? So we're hoping the high schools do that.
When did it start?
Oh, oh, yes, I forgot. Let's say Marion County took a look at the new, the new public charter schools, and yeah, that's working well, we'd like to send 20 students over, like we've exchanged before in programs. Is that a possibility or would you say?
I think that was one of the qualities, things, for the micro schools to take those sites, South Marion County, Villalobos type. And I think it's ours to calculate the FTE, Steve, that's perfect.
And it would be our FTE.
They don't have micro school in Marion County?
It's a natural.
Natural, okay, yeah.
What does the FTE forecast do in the Department of Education?
It already has been passed. We've already submitted.
Okay.
Did you specifically do, did December this year, they revised the software on the bill of state to change?
We've submitted it, but we can't make an amendment, we haven't.
They haven't had, the next step in the state is the rolling estimate process. That hasn't been, yeah. And sometimes after they have that conference, they'll come back to us, they may have some ideas of how they feel we should adjust the forecast, they've done some that for the last few years.
So we still have time to consider the micro school? I mean, we've approved a position, right? It's going to be part of that, probably, one of the things you're going to start doing relatively quickly, right? Identify the students that would fit in that program, and to give us an estimated or forecast number.
And we'll see, we get the government budget, we'll see the number, because typically sometimes the government will give our forecast, other lady will give our forecast, so there may be some slight variances, but it is our forecast, it goes up in the approval, DOE to actually go through the legislative process, we're planning on the legislature. So if we see the government budget, it will shoot out next month, and we'll see what number he uses. Typically, he does not use the same number, and it's, they use their own estimates, we will have to make some slight variances between, to its own need.
But these are the forecasts that we're giving, first number, that's true. Any other questions?
Well, I just would like to say, I do like to look at numbers and comparisons. I appreciate the comparisons that are in here. I think that's very important in making decisions, and I'm glad to know that you all are pretty much on top of it, because this is a very important part of our funding mechanism, right? So I just want to say that, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler. Ms. Alagretta, and thank you for being patient.
I might not have heard my response, I said, "That's very okay."
Oh, okay, no, I didn't, I'm sorry, no, thank you.
I would say you save the best for last, but who knows?
Always, yes.
Yeah. Chuck's after you.
Always followed by a man. All right, it's good to have humor. I think we were on page four.
Yes, ma'am.
We were talking about the five bullets that are going to be requested to be added to it, and they refer to the additional information that we were talking to a little bit ago about those necessary forms for specific medication. Another new entry underneath it has to do with herbal medicine. We had a new situation this year that came across where we had a prescription from a doctor of oriental medicine submitted to the school. So we needed to add that new language after conferring with our school board attorney, Mr. Bradshaw. And the last.
Actually, a doctor, like an M D E O, or was the title Doctor of Oriental Medicine?
We did a lot of research on that, Ms. Cardiavolo?
Yes, the title is Doctor of Oriental Medicine, and I'm conferring with the State Department of Education and looking online, Doctor of Oriental Medicine that has a valid license issued by the State of Florida Board of Acupuncturists can legally prescribe herbal therapy. Because originally, when they brought the prescription in, it's not our total conduct to accept any prescriptions from a doctor of oriental medicine, a licensed acupuncturist. So we told the parent they'd have to come in, give it to them, and while I researched it, and as researching it, we found out that they are legally allowed to prescribe herbal medications. And so, referring with Mr. Bradshaw, we couldn't deny giving it to the child. So we wanted to add it in there, so we're covered under receiving those prescriptions from them.
And they can diagnose and prescribe, is that?
That's what it says, "Based on statutory definitions in Chapter 457 Florida statutes, a doctor of oriental medicine must have a valid license issued by the Florida Board of Acupuncturists to legally prescribe herbal therapy," so.
And give them a license to use herbal medicine?
Yeah.
It might not be a medical license as you think of.
It's not a medical license, and that's why originally I said we couldn't accept that, the parent could come in and give the medication themselves, and so we could verify that we could accept that. And according to my source at the Department of Education, she said, she sent me information plus I looked up to verify that they can legally prescribe herbal therapies, only herbal therapies, so.
Thank you.
And that's why I wanted to clarify it in there, okay?
And the next bullet is not new information, but we wanted it to be bolded at the bottom because we do have many medicines that are left behind at the end of the school year, and we felt if we gave it a bullet rather than just have it inserted in a paragraph, parents would see it hopefully clearer. And the other part to the health part of the code that we're adding has to do with specialized medical equipment in school. This has never been in the code, you know, it's been in our school manual, our school health resource manual, but we have students who throughout the year come in with crutches, slings, canes, wheelchairs, and we are not allowed to have them on campus without a doctor's note and permission to have them use that equipment. So we wanted to make sure it was in the code for parents.
When you say "we," are you saying we're not allowed by law? By, by, what are we not allowed by?
By our school.
Well, in our school health manual, it says that we need doctor's permission. I don't know where that originated. I've only been here since July as well, so it's always been in there as far as I know. I can research to find out where it originated, I reached the search, but it's in our manual, and I found from one of the other nurses that, who was new this year as well, parents don't know, they don't, they had access to the manual, they go, "We'll get it in the clinic," but it's nowhere where it's publicized that the parents would know. So many of the doctors around here know that to give the students a note, the emergency rooms do, but many parents don't know. So I thought if it was in there, since it's in our manual, the parents get this, when they say we didn't know where it was, you can say it's in the student code on them, which is more accessible to them than coming into the clinic and reading the bullet there.
The layout in our manual is derived from the School Health Administrative Code. So we take this enormous document from School Health Administrative Guidelines that then we turn into our school health manual, which is in all the clinics. And we looked at information that's pertinent to parents and students, and we put that in the code. A lot of things in that manual, parents don't have a need to have that information, it's administration of certain medicines, it's treatment of bites, fevers, things like that.
But why are we talking about ACE bandages and slings? And, I mean, so that way that reads to me, though, it says school nurse should be notified if a student comes to school with a sling. Well, whose job is it to notify them? It didn't say that's to be written by a parent. I assume maybe that's what this is wanting, a note from the parent, but, you know, isn't that going a little too far with those things?
If a student comes in with a sling, a cast, or an ACE bandage, the nurse would want to know how to treat that, whether we change the dressing, whether it smells because the student's had it on for a while, whether it's infected and there's pus in there.
So whose responsibility is it to notify the school nurse?
The parent needs to come in with a note to the, or send the student with a note to the clinic, and then the clinic aide or administration or somebody notifies the school nurse.
A note from the doctor.
Well, now, wait, that's, I can wrap my daughter's ankle in an ACE bandage, and I'm not sending her to the doctor for that, so I'm not going to have to go to the doctor if my daughter's sprained her ankle in an athletic contest. I mean, if they wrap it in an ACE bandage, now you're going to require me as the parent to have to go to see the doctor, no, first of all, no, but second of all, you know, why do I even need to write a note? I would think, I mean, it's just, I, I want to keep it simple, and I want, I don't want to add bureaucracy or add this frustration that people have with.
No, I agree, I agree, but try to keep it simple. I was just copying what was already in our manual there. We could, I wouldn't be against taking out something like a doctor for an ACE bandage. However, I would like the nurses to be notified. I was in a clinic the other day doing a QI visit, and a student has a cast, and he fell or got pushed down on the playground, and he comes into the clinic, and nobody in the clinic even knew that the child had had a broken arm, you know, I mean, it would just be.
Well, is that.
We can keep an eye on those things a little.
Is that really necessary? I mean, I, you have to educate me, but as a parent, I would think, boy, they're really watching over us now. I mean, you know, I mean, it seems to me like that, that last bullet, I mean, I'm not really for that. I mean, I can see maybe canes and crutches, you know, because there's a special piece of medical, medical equipment, but.
What if we reworded? I mean, I understand the fact that the school nurse would probably want to know if the child has that, but I understand in making it almost sound mandatory.
Right.
Somebody say, "It may be to your best interest to notify the school nurse if you have that on in case you need assistance or something along those lines," but it's not going to be, I understand what you're saying. If you want to wrap your daughter's ankle, you don't need to send a note in.
But if you need to rewrap a noon, then you probably should send a note.
Right, yeah.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah, because to rewrap it, the health room attendant will have no authority to do that without having some kind of a note. They can't just, they don't have a license, they can't make those decisions on their own, they just have what training we get them once a year to take care of these students, and they're trained specifically by the nurse how to take care of each student. So if the health room attendant has a student there that needs their ACE wrap, rewrapped because it's too tight, it's hurting their toes, and the nurse isn't at that school, we have 22 school sites, and I have, including me, 12 nurses, and I'm not assigned to a school. So we can't be a nurse at every school that would then have the license to do that. We rely on our health room attendants, who we train, but if we knew ahead of time a student had that ACE wrap and might need it to be rewrapped, or they had a big bandage on their arm that was covering some, some wound, then we would, the nurse would know ahead of time to go train to that school and train those health room attendants to make them more able to take care of that student. So that heads up is very helpful, especially since we are in a tenured staff, we're not in every single school. But I agree with, you know, if you recommend it versus making it mandatory, it's very helpful.
We're working on blocking that.
It may just, it may come back, but I understand what you're saying, you know, maybe something along the lines of, you know, you know, if you have concerns about your child, you know, it may be beneficial. it may be beneficial to notify the school.
I was just going to say, I mean, you say it in the other statement above in the bullet, "Parents and guardians are encouraged." Parents and guardians, you know, are encouraged to notify. I mean, that would...
Yeah, why don't we just do that? Parents, guardians are encouraged to notify the school nurse if a student comes to school with a sling cast.
But the thing with the walker and the, I mean, the wheelchair and the crutches, I believe the reason that they were requiring a doctor's note is so that it's not used long-term nor used for...
And I think that parents and guardians are encouraged would only go to the second.
Okay, okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah, just to the second bullet.
Yeah, I agree with that, and I appreciate, because that's why we have this, right?
Yeah, that's the whole point of it.
Now, I do have one thing with the heart monitor that I just wanted to bring up because, you know, some people keep their medical issues very private. And for a child to have to wear a heart monitor, they can do that in a way that other children may not know. And isn't there something, in some regard here, we have to pay to parents who want their child's, you know, health condition to be kept private? So basically, we're saying if they come in with a heart monitor, they have to, they have to have a note, the way I read it, correct? From the doctor, because it's special equipment?
Yes, yes.
And is that fair though, are we...
Would you want the clinic and the nurses there not to know that...
I would, if my daughter is at a point where she has to wear a heart monitor, boy, that's kind of a privacy issue to me, I would...
It's a life-saving issue. Would you want the nurse to know that this child might need special attention at some point? It would be rare.
If a child comes in with chest pain or something heart-related, you know, you're going to sit there and you're going to weed out what possibly are the reasons for. You're not going to immediately think cardiac, because most children will have cardiac issues. If a child's going to be wearing a heart monitor, they're thinking there's something cardiac going on, which would be truly devastating. And if a nurse at a school, you know, there are 700 students in a school, if we know that one has, potentially has a cardiac condition, that could alert the nurse to be thinking in that direction far quicker than it would, okay, do you have asthma, do you have, you know, bronchitis, and that's causing an issue, did you, you know, were outside running and it was cold outside and that, you know, got in your lungs? But if you, if you had the heads up, and it's only between the nurse and the parent, it's not going to go to everywhere else.
And the other thing, it's also going to be HIPAA, and also student record confidential. Plus, as you all know, most kids, they don't care, they're going to tell their buddies about it. You know, they, they fly with others, you know, that's...
It's elementary school, they're going to show everybody.
But, no, but in a pure privacy situation, you're going to have your HIPAA laws that are going to apply. You're also going to have your, your student record, your student confidentiality, you know, so that they should not share that information with other people unless that person has a specific need to know.
Because that note will go into the permanent file, right? Once the school nurse, or once it's made a part of their file.
It's in a cumulative record, but that's confidential record.
Right, right. If I want to see that file, you know, that stuff gets redacted out. There's only a very small portion that gets released.
Okay.
Um, just on, on, above that first bullet, in that paragraph, a note from the parent, should that be slash guardian? I know it's a minor thing, but it's just...
Like I said, I copied it from what we already did.
No, no, it wasn't even a, it just, this is just the, that's why we do this.
So at the bottom of the last bullet, it says, "Parents, guardians are encouraged to notify the school nurse if a student comes to school with a sling cast, ACE bandage, special dressing, or any other medical needs."
I think that sounds better.
Okay, perfect.
Appreciate your, your eyes on picking up on that parent guardian, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
You know, even a blind school gets a nut every once in a while.
And thank you for your questions, Mr. Dodd, appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Cordova. Okay, we can move on to page five, zero tolerance. Nothing, in my opinion, drastically has been added to this section with the exemption of the addendum that we spoke about a little bit earlier on the request of the school board. Mr. Bradshaw did pen something to include in here that would, in writing, not have a consequence come forth under zero tolerance if a student had non-medicated lip balm, like chapstick, sunscreen, things of that nature. The board had asked that something be put in the code so that it would be in writing. And they specifically addressed those two items.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Page six has to do with page 16 in the code, types of disciplinary interventions. It was recommended to change the words "center" to "setting" and add verbiage to address non-participation sports and extracurricular activities for those students in an alternative education setting.
I know they've been taking students on field trips at the Renaissance Center, and of course, I know this means at their home school.
Correct.
Correct? So I don't guess, there's no need to specify that? I mean, they are allowed to do extracurricular activities while at the Renaissance Center.
My understanding, the field trips at the X, at the Renaissance Sermi Center tie into their curriculum. It's the science program, and the field trips that they go on are all related to their curriculum, their science curriculum.
All right.
Yes, thank you. Page seven of your handout. This is something new that we are adding to pages 17 to 24, definitions of acts for disciplinary intervention. Hazing, physical attack, and sexual assault are three new codes that have come out from CESSR, which is the School Environmental Safety Incident Reporting. We have to include these in our Code of Student Conduct, and they are word verbatim. Page eight, we go a little bit further into our pages 17 to 22 of 24, which talks about disciplinary interventions. The APs have asked that these seven, seven offenses have the same verbiage as the CESSR codes because they do default to CESSR, and they felt that mirroring the verbiage to CESSR was a better use of interpretation of an incident and the correct coding.
Is that where the level numbers come from as well?
The level numbers come from, from CESSR. And level one is the most severe, a level two, of course, is a little less severe, and three and four are your least severe. Also, CESSR determines on the particular incident if law enforcement needs to be consulted, if it's a requirement for their consultation, or just a recommendation. So on your higher levels, it does not need to have law enforcement consultation, but on your lower levels, it does. So again, it's the coding of that particular incident to make sure it mirrors the definition of CESSR and that law enforcement has been involved. For example, if we had a battery and the school coded it as that, it defaults automatically to CESSR. If there's nothing in the system that says law enforcement was involved, then we get a data correction, and we have to find out why law enforcement was involved. Because CESSR, the state reporting agency, says because of the level of it, it has to be reported to law enforcement, and it needs to be documented. Nine times out of 10, that's your SRO. Page nine is a new addition. Plagiarism and cheating was asked to be put in the code to ensure that there's consistent verbiage throughout the district when defining these two violations. Knowing on page 21 in the code now, letter T, we do have online coursework violation, which the board approved last year. Secondary level and elementary level felt it was important to talk about plagiarism and cheating in the code and to have that consistent verbiage. This was brought to the committee, it was also brought to the secondary curriculum folks, and Mr. Clodder and Ms. Humble worked closely with those group of people to ensure that it met the needs of all those levels.
Ms. Oliver, may I go back to page? Not that I have a heart for a minute.
Can we just one second? Is there anything on this nine? Because I know you're going to go back to something, I, I just didn't want us to leave this. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Humble. I think that's the last of, that's the last of the changes, correct?
There is one more page.
Go ahead with that number.
Okay. Page 10 of your handout refers to the end of our code, page 33, non-discrimination information. We are being asked to add the bullet below. The district will comply with all federal requirements regarding discrimination and harassment, including but not limited to 34 CFR Part 108. This is coming out of a request from our Office of Equity Education, where we do a yearly report and a compliance report, and they are asking us to have this in our code to show that we do not discriminate the use of our facilities from any group. And they just have called it the Boy Scout Act. So we're complying with the Office of Equal Education.
Yeah, isn't that discriminatory?
O E E O. Where are you?
What happened to the Girl Scouts?
They're, they're there. I think it was probably the Boy Scout organization that brought it to the forefront. Ms. Powers, you look surprised.
Yeah, I was, okay.
Ms. Oliver, on page six, where it says, "Students will be excluded from participating in all sports," and the rest is silence. Was that a unanimous discussion by, especially the three high schools? And would anybody, would they have anything, if we had put students may be excluded and they got up to the high schools? Or was that unanimous by all three?
I, I will share with you, the verbiage was brought forward, and there wasn't any conversation about keeping it separate. I know that, I'm trying to remember, I'm sorry, I don't have my notes in front of me. I know one, one principal wanted some further conversation about that because the concern was students coming to off-campus events, like football games, how would they monitor that? They wouldn't know that Mr. Kennedy wouldn't be allowed on their campus if he was suspended, or if he was in an alternative environment. They wouldn't know every student that shouldn't be there. So they felt that putting that there kind of made them responsible for that. Does that make sense?
But is there flexibility? We, you know, I'm thinking of sometimes even when we've done our disciplinary, we've got somebody who, we say, "Listen, they're a senior, they're going to have prom." Do we really want to total, I mean, they, they maybe have done something that was disciplined, but do we want to fully just lock it down and relieve some discretion there?
I think this is kind of like zero tolerance, it's like we've just given that kid who did something stupid, the death penalty. And then maybe the schools, now, if all three schools are adamant about it, then I don't want to change it, but I'm wondering...
Change well may.
I'm just wondering if maybe they get the flexibility to say, they've got the option to say, Doug cannot finish his senior year in sports or prom, or they have to do this before they're allowed to.
Just because that may be part of the whole carrot that they're trying to do is if they, they put that program together.
I understand that in our suspension, our expulsions, that's in the contract that we do, that they cannot attend any school functions.
Right.
Y'all made some exceptions. Another concern that I remember from the meeting was not so much that I, as the principal of this school, send someone to, you know, the Renaissance for pre-teenager issues, and they come back to my school. But, you know, the principal of Crystal River High School doesn't know that, that kid and know what's going on. So now, instead of them showing up at my school, now they're showing up at other schools, and there was some concern about that.
Of monitoring that.
Of being able to monitor that.
But that wouldn't change whether it's a may or a will.
Well, if it's, if it's will, then they cannot go to any school. But may means that...
A lot of arguments.
So, so you put me at, at Sermi, okay, and I came out of Citrus High School. Well, Mr. Hilgird might say, "It's fine for him to come back to the basketball game, but if he goes to Crystal River, I go to Crystal River, they don't know who I am. I pay a fee going to the door, and/or as a student ID or whatever, and they don't know that I'm not supposed to be at another school, at another, you know..."
The only thing here is it says we've used "may" throughout the whole thing except for that one clause. The school may establish a special program. The, uh, these programs may require, but then we come to this part, we say, "But it will..."
I'm just...
I mean, no, I mean, and I'm just saying, that's just to me, that's the only...
It's similar, and that's about some of the conversation that happened at the meeting. I believe that was one of the other concerns, was kind of the monitoring thing, you know? If I don't know, you know, it's easy when you know the kids, which ones are supposed to be where, but, you know, if you don't...
Can I do this, may I?
Sure. You shall.
If I, how about if I contact all three high schools? Because they probably got scenarios for every thing that we're not thinking about, and I can bring that to the board.
And I can share those, but if you're going to, if you're going to do that, that's, that's fine. And, and the problem was that some were doing it and some weren't, and there was nothing consistent.
And I can see where, I as a principal, Michael Thomas played, but Wes, the other principal, may not let him play at the other school for the same. I mean, I can see the inconsistency. Let me have a conversation.
And I was thinking that once everything is said and done, don't we sit down with this child and say, "Here is what you have to do," and you tell it to his face? And then if he doesn't do it, then, you know what I'm saying? You've got to talk to the person.
And it is on the, I mean, we're talking strictly suspension, it is on the suspension form. If we're talking about going to an alternative setting like the Crest 40 to 5-day program or Renaissance Sermi, it is shared that they will not participate in their zone school, being on the basketball team. It's not even going to the event, it's going to the prom and going to the middle school dance and, and being a part of the basketball team and the football team. And the conversation ensued, whoever principal didn't feel their behavior warranted them being on their campus, and they sent them to the Renaissance to try to change and modify their behavior, then how could we let them participate in an extra sports curricular activity or the dance? That was, that was what brought this forward.
But some of this, I thought the change from, from center to setting was because we've had some circumstances where we said we wanted to create a restrictive setting at the school and not necessarily say we're going to send them to Renaissance. Is that not this, or...
Yeah, but that was generally done in expulsion or in alternative expulsion.
So that's what I'm not sure, is, so then why are we changing from center to settings? I'm sorry, maybe I don't understand what the purpose of that.
I think that the alternative education setting that you're most going to be familiar with, Sermi.
Right. But it does, but this allows for there to be some...
Interpretation.
Interpretation or, or design if, for example, whether it be Crest, whether it be in-school type of...
Well, this says that they, they, you know, the schools, they can, they can establish, they may establish a special program, they may require students to attend special classes and intend to change that behavior. But they would be excluded from participating in the sports and extracurricular activities with the duration of their enrollment. Sermi doesn't have, you know, their extracurricular activities, obviously, if they're there, that's something different, but the concern was students coming back onto their zone school or on to other campuses.
Then, may we call it principals and guys in the board and note out without them responding, saying, "Here is the outcome of my conversation," or "Our conversation."
And also, when we move to, at the next meeting, you have this, if, at the regular meeting, you can change it then however you want, and then approve to advertise with the change. So we can change, we still have one more, we have multiple times to modify it, but you know, we can modify it up until the time that we approve it for advertising.
But tell us, Ms. Paul, when you use the two different words, "setting" and "center," "setting" broadens the programs that students can be involved in, "center" does not. And one would think that if students is an alternative center, then the parents of the school say, "This child was beat up without wanting to see him play basketball in the high school," that, that would not be a good situation. And so, I'm leaning toward the "will be excluded," but I think maybe Thomas's point is should we go back to "center" and not make it so broad?
You mean like, referring more to the Renaissance?
Right, right, okay.
Yeah, because "setting" could be anywhere on campus.
Could be anything, you could just...
I mean, they should be allowed to make that decision at school.
That was, that's what I thought we were doing, that was what I thought the reasoning was. And if that was the case, I thought, let the school make that decision.
Exactly.
So leaving it at "center," then would the verbiage be complimentary of it?
At "center," I could, could not, or maybe...
Maybe I don't understand why we're changing it. And that's, and maybe I, because I thought the purpose, I assumed the purpose was to broaden it, not to limit it. If the idea is that we're trying to restrict it, then, I don't know.
Why don't we go back to your original text and, but then add, "Students will be excluded from participating in all sports and extracurricular activities for..." from participating in all sports and extracurricular activities for the duration of their enrollment at the alternative education setting.
So, if we, if we didn't change center to setting, we could leave the verbiage that's recommended and put enrollment at the alternative education setting, uh, center.
And I, I understand what you're saying, because an alternative education setting may be ISS.
That's what I'm thinking. It worked for us.
There's more corporal function in that, more, more corporal than council.
Did, and, and in doing that, I'm assuming we're not affecting any of the field trip issues that Sermi does, which I think we find beneficial, because that's really curriculum-based, and that's them. Okay. I just want to make sure we don't restrict. That's what I thought. So, I just want to make sure we don't, we don't cause a restriction there that we're...
Yeah, I think we brought this case to attention this year because we had different schools apply different standards, so we had kids going to Renaissance that were able to participate in sports at one high school and not at another.
Yeah, that we don't want.
I don't think that's, we need to be consistent in what we do, and also for extracurricular activities.
Then that's, then that's what I think we can accomplish by that.
By leaving it at center. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Could I ask that we take a short recess for five minutes?
Sure, go right ahead. I mean, we'll, we'll take a five-minute recess real quick.